The only thing I don't procrastinate on is being confused.
Hello? Can you guys hear me?
No.
I don't think this is working.
Check, check. Check, check.
We're starting with 2507.
Testing. Is this coming through? I don't think so. Shall we...
It should just be, this is the in-room audio.
Please pardon our delay as we try to address this audio issue.
Check, check, check.
Testing, one, two, three. Testing, one, two, three.
Test, test.
Still loading.
Check, check.
What do we do?
You said project.
Hello?
It's theater season for all the high schools, we'll just project.
Won't be recorded, but it's a very... Oh, it is. But where's it picking up the sound?
Recording for the minutes.
I thought it was recorded through here. Okay, so we'll forge ahead.
Just ask the audience to tell us if they can't hear somebody.
Good evening. And welcome to this microphone-less meeting of the Syracuse Planning Commission. Apologize that our equipment is not working the way it should be working this evening, but we have a lot of items of business, so we are going to forge ahead and do the best that we can under the circumstances so that these applications and projects don't get delayed. In the meantime, maybe someone will come up with the equipment that we need to make this work. But in the meantime, welcome to this meeting of the Syracuse Planning Commission. We will proceed with our agenda of business items this evening, notably our public hearings. Before we take up those items, however, we will return to the minutes from our meeting earlier this month on March 3rd and ask for commission action upon those minutes that have been distributed to the commission members.
Move approval of the minutes from March 3rd with no changes?
Exactly.
Due discussion. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Our March 3rd minutes are approved as circulated, and we will move now into our public hearings for this evening. One immediate note, and if you're following the agenda, we are moving to later this evening the item on the Syracuse Housing Strategy Implementation Urban Renewal Plan. So if you are here for that item, that will come up later in the agenda. And we will move to the public hearings of word of process to those who may be unfamiliar with our procedures. As each application is announced by a member of the staff, we ask that the applicant come to the podium in the middle of the room, speak into the powerless microphone, and give your name, address, and a brief summary of the application involved. Following questions from the commission members, we will then offer an opportunity to anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor of the application to come forward to do that. And similarly, we will invite members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to the application to do that as well. Where comments are offered in opposition, the applicant will be afforded an opportunity to return and address the comments made in opposition. And in all cases, speaking for or speaking against, we ask that speakers maintain a limit of two to three minutes on their comments. And especially speak clearly this evening because with the microphone not operating properly, when you give your name and address for the record so that we have that in our minutes accurately. So with that, we'll begin with our first public hearing.
First couple of housekeeping items, just for the record. On the agenda, the first item, which was withdrawn, that project has reached an agreement and with the Landmark Preservation Board, so no longer needed to be heard. The second item, SP-24-28 for 1105 North Salinas Street, that is being postponed. We're still working with the applicant and their response and to the Syracuse Police Department's Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design Evaluation. So we had to postpone that. Hopefully, next meeting, that'll be back on. Chairman mentioned the Syracuse Housing Strategy Implementation of the Urban Renewal Plan. We're tentatively going to move that to number four after the West, Erie Boulevard West Parking Lot Project and before the Comstock Residence Hall. And then lastly, SP-25-10, anybody here for 1641 West Genesee Street and Milton Ave Special Use Permit? That is also being postponed and put on hold pending the owner of the building getting his certificate of compliance on the building. He hasn't had one since 2022, and we were hopeful that he would get it done, but he has not. So going to hold off until that's completed. So that leaves us to page 119 in your packet. First item this evening will be a special use permit, SP-25-07 at 308-18 North Kraus Ave and Lodi Street. This is in the MX2 Zone District, and we'll ask the applicant and/or owner to come up and give an introduction on the project. Yeah, is anybody here for 308 North Kraus? Yeah, just approach the mic and say your name and address and...
308 North Kraus, my name is Fawazal Harvey. Anything you want to talk about?
Yeah, so the application is for food and beverage retail. Can you just talk about the business and how you're planning to operate this and...
Well, the business, we only do grossly and tobacco, so it doesn't have food. I don't do alcohol or laro in there. So food is going to have a lot, that's what I'm trying to do since I opened up. And it's been giving me a hard time by zoning because we had issues with the curbs, which wasn't my fault. I bought a building like that. City wanted me to do the curb, and I didn't have it, so they end up doing it and throw that on my taxes. And I had to do a lot of work outside and inside. So guests last three months, I spent, I guess fixing the glass, $10,000. Five of them were broken. They broke in, stealing, you know, they broke the glass to go in there. It cost me two grand just to replace each one of them. So there was five of them broken. City wants me to fix. I guess fixed it in December. And I built a brand-new bathroom, painted a new ceiling, everything inside, and it respected by the city. But it's, it's hard to stay in business without having food, especially in my business. I don't do alcohol, I don't do laro, I don't do any other, you know, except EBT and a little bit of tobacco in there. So my hope is to do hot food in there will really make me stay alive, basically, pay my bills. And I did all the requirement the city wanted me to do, especially in, you know, entrance and the parking lot itself. All, I think, everything they required of me, even on the windows, you can see the sign is. And I sat down with people in pyramids and zoning, and they want some requirements with like a small fence to change it. And I said, okay, I don't mind. I already spent almost more than 15 grand, so it doesn't, it's not going to hurt me to spend another 1,000 or two.
So we'll see if there are any questions for you.
Yeah, I guess I have a couple of questions about the SEP Ted report. I appreciate the ones you did respond to and accepted and indicated that you were willing to make the changes. Just wanted to follow up on a couple of them because it's not entirely clear, I mean, what's going to be happening. First of all, the first one is on page 131 of the application. It's with respect to the parking situation, sidewalk and entrance in front of the store. The recommendation from the police was that you consider putting a sidewalk in front of the store, between the store and the parking lot, in order to demarcate the difference between the parking lot and the store, because right now, there's just stops there. So that was recommendation of the police department in the report. In case you didn't respond to that, so I'm just wondering if you have any thoughts about that issue.
So the city did a new sidewalk in there.
This is in front of, between the store and your parking lot.
Can you pull the picture?
The picture's on page 131, probably the top of that page, if you want to pull it down. Yeah, that'll work. Actually, the other way, yeah.
The other direction.
The other direction, other direction. The top of that page.
Almost, that's the picture.
I think the picture on the right, it displays what you were talking about, Barry, right?
Yes, correct. It's a picture on the right. At least, I'm just repeating what the report said.
The sidewalk, you mean?
Yeah.
It's there, right? Are you talking about close to my building?
Yeah, that's correct. What the report indicates is the police suggested a, well, a sidewalk between the storefront and the parking lot, rather than just the bumps and some other demarcation. I'm not sure if you...
Right, but if you put a sidewalk, you're not going to be able to open the door because it opens outside. So if I make a level up, I can't open the two doors because they open outside.
Okay.
I mean, I don't mind to do it, but it's...
Right, well, I mean, I can't tell from the drawing, you know, what the elevation is of the surface versus the door, et cetera.
Even if you notice, it's leveled down.
Right.
That's why, because both doors open outside.
Okay, so I'm just saying, just in terms of the report, you didn't respond to that, so that's your response. I'm just, you know, responding to what the report says. And then the second question was on page 133. They just have a comment about the surveillance system and whether or not everything is working in a sufficient quality. And again, it says the applicant did not respond.
Yeah, we have two of them.
Okay.
We even did two, you know, a brand-new one just for the back. So we added two more for the parking lot, so we have actually two systems there.
Okay, so then the other question was, again, the, just in terms of the lighting, apparently, I mean, they suggested the light in the back be on if possible because of the danger that that presents of people being able to hide back there, et cetera. You indicated that neighbors had complained about it?
Yes.
So there's no way that light can be trained down so that people won't complain?
I had a light there, they say, you know, they can't sleep, it's too bright, so can you turn it off? So for me to have it, it has to aim, if it's going to aim for that certain area right there, it's going to really go through their window. I mean, I don't mind, I can have it, but they're going to complain. It already happens before because it's because the distance too close. I could put two or three, I don't mind, but they're not going to be happy.
I guess you had a question, in part for zoning administrator, just in terms of the window issue. I understand what you're saying, and you're using the plywood as a way to prevent windows constantly being broken and broken into. I'm just wondering if staff is satisfied with that particular SEP Ted issue?
Our staff would, you know, support the experts who are trained in the SEP Ted evaluation from the police department and their strict, you know, recommendation. Obviously, it's up to the board, you know, to discuss if we want to make, you know, everything explicitly listed from the police department an actual condition of approval. But I want to go back to the sidewalk item, too. You know, I think that the key there was SPD was looking, you know, to delineate the pedestrian walking area from the parking lot, whether that's done with, you know, some sort of bollard or demarcation. So not necessarily installation of like an actual concrete sidewalk, per se. They're looking to separate where the pedestrians are supposed to be and where the cars are supposed to be. So I recommend that something be done related to that item to achieve that.
Just a dry box.
Correct. Staff would also like to, you know, bring this up from the applicant. I heard you mention tobacco a couple of times. Your City of Syracuse Tobacco License was denied. Are you aware of that?
It wasn't denied, so when we applied for it, I mean, I went there, they said, okay, when you do the application, you have to first get your certificate of use. So when we were there, she's like, all right, you can't do anything until you clear this off. So it took us more than a year because all the money we had to spend. I never was told I can pay for it upfront, then, you know, continue doing what you're doing. So when I got to the point, and I was like, okay, I think we're ready now with zoning, I'm all done, I fixed the windows, I did the new bathroom, all of that, okay, can we get the license for the tobacco? She's like, oh, the deadline is over. I was like, what do you mean? I'm here almost every month. You never told me I can pay the 250, right when I paid for my certificate of use. And I'm here almost every month, and now you're telling me the deadline is over.
Well, just for the record, though, your tobacco license was denied on June 12, 2024. City of Syracuse Tobacco Retail License Ordinance went into effect in 2023. The specific item that you conflict with is that all tobacco retailers must be at least 750 feet from any school, city park, or existing licensed retailer. Your parcel falls within this buffer zone. It's located within 750 feet of Finnegan Park in the Holly Green Play Lot. So that is the reason for denial. And that conflicts with what you're saying, but, you know, that's the staff report on... And I just want to be clear, because if we're going to establish a special use permit, and he wants to do tobacco, like, for the record, want to be clear that you can't sell tobacco. You're not eligible. And if you're caught selling tobacco, you'd be subject to closure. And that's going to impact everything, so...
No one would be eligible in that location, given the 750-foot, 750-foot... Yeah, it's not something specific to your application, it's just that in that region, it's saturated.
I mean, I'm not selling tobacco, I'm waiting for the license to get it. I even got inspected today by the city. They were down there today. I didn't even know. He just told me. And I took the tobacco out way before that. But when they start applying for it, I came in for the tobacco, they told me, this is what they told me at zoning, said you got to clear this first before you move on. So when I was done, they told me it's the deadline, even though there's two other stores even way closer to the school than I, and they have tobacco. So there's two way up the street closer to them, and they have it. But I wasn't told, just pay for it, then you're okay. I never sold to minor, I never had issues with tobacco selling or even sell vape. So you can even go and find my location. I never have, even for all this past years, I never sold to minor. I never have issues with the state or the city. So even honestly, I don't even sell that much. It's because I have few customers who come in, grab their, you know, cigarettes, but it brings my customers because, you know, I sell most of it is EBT. And I've been trying to get the special permit since I opened up. And I'm not even, I'm making $200, $300 a day over there. I can't even pay the rent. We are like two months now, you know, if I don't pay another two months, I can be out. So even the tobacco is not, it's not like a big deal for me, but it helps to bring me more customers, and I'm not doing anything illegally over there.
But the problem, I think, is that the tobacco, correct me if I'm wrong, but the tobacco license has been denied. So I don't know what the appeal process is with the tobacco licensing board, but it's not, we can't rule on that one way or another. So the real question for you is, do you want to operate the business without tobacco? And can you operate the business without it? That's what you have to decide based on what you're applying for here. Because if you're inspected and you've sold tobacco, they will close you.
Because we can't recommend approval to the common council if you're planning to sell tobacco. Because the license has been denied, so we can't approve a recommendation of the common council if you're planning to sell tobacco as part of your business plan.
So you're saying I should go back and fight for the tobacco first, then come back here?
Yeah, I mean, there is, you can't, there's no, there's no appeal of it. You are not grandfathered in, you do not meet the proximity requirements. There's no appeal process to that, he doesn't meet it. This location is not, will never be permitted. I could be standing in your shoes, and that'd be the same answer.
When you said I'm not grandfathered in, what does that mean?
So there are, prior to the city's ordinance, if you held a license and you maintained it, you could keep it. But new license holders, you either had to renew or, you know, get a new license and meet the requirements of the ordinance, and that's where we're at. You don't meet it, so you can't be granted one. You can operate as food and beverage retail, but I heard you mention the word tobacco, I think, three times. So I wanted to bring it up because I think it's important if that's a model of your business that it's discussed here openly and that there's no surprises.
Since I opened up, I have tobacco, I have state license, and I've been running it. So not until the special tobacco, city tobacco start having the... So not until the special tobacco, city tobacco start having the requirement, and I kept the first month that happens. I applied for it, and they told me, all right, you gotta clear this first.
I think that might have been some miscommunication, but if you come in to get a tobacco license, you were probably told you don't even have land use approval, like, we can't even review a license. You need to get a special use permit because you opened without land use approval, which is why we're here. But that seems more likely with what was meant to be told, I wasn't there, but that seems more, you know, accurate to probably what happened. We can't take in a tobacco license if you don't have a special use permit to be open as a store. So you probably came in for the tobacco license, we're told you can't get this, you don't have a special use permit, you need to get the special use permit first, and and that's where we're at. But either way, that application was after the tobacco ordinance went into effect, so I don't know that it matters much, but.
So what you're saying is that anybody who opens a store after the time the ordinance went into effect, if there wasn't a continuation with the other owner, then that permission went away?
Yeah, and to top it off, they're not transferable either, so. But yes. So he has to strictly meet the, all the proximity requirements and all other requirements in the ordinance, which the property doesn't, I don't even want to say he doesn't, the property doesn't.
The location.
So that's something for you to think about, is what we're saying, is whatever we do, if we approve it, we can only prove it on food and beverage. Because then we would send our recommendation on to the common council, and they still have to approve it.
Okay, so it wasn't clear when I went there. If they made that clear to me, I would probably have done it the same month and really wouldn't even wait that long. So even when you hop online and you fill out the application, it tells you, you can't skip it, you gotta do this first and before you move on. And when she said, she said, all you had to do, you could pay the 250 at that time. So it's not fair for me, since I opened up for 10 years, I've been selling tobacco, now I can't sell it. There's not even really good reason, like, tell me I sell to a minor, tell me I sell anything illegal, come close me down. But I'm not doing none of that, I'm not even selling alcohol or laro. And there's people even way closer, like, talking about so close to the school, and they have tobacco.
So just to keep us on track, I mean, the subject of this body and this application is for a special use permit. We can discuss, you know, your tobacco license offline and, you know, further, but just to be clear, it's denied. You cannot sell tobacco, and I think we need to move on from that. And as it stands right here, you need to recognize that it would be illegal for you to do so, and you'd be subject to whatever enforcement results come of that if caught, so. So I think we need to move on from that, and the board should be aware of, you know, any motions made or conditions of approval.
Any other questions from the commission members at this point?
Also, thank you.
There's one more item that the staff would like to bring up, it's related to the parking lot. It'd be that, see where those four cars are in the top left corner, that triangle in red? That, there is a site plan that shows that that's supposed to be grass, and we recommend that that be a strict condition of approval as well, that Can you go to page 140 now? 140 shows it in your packet on the site plan on the left side, and.
That's the mechanicals issue that.
And the grass be put in, and if cars are parking there, that something be put, you know, in front of the grass to deter that, so it doesn't turn into a mud pit, but.
Anything else we should be aware of?
Just the recommended conditions and the standard conditions, per usual.
Okay, thank you. Are there any individuals who wish to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come forward, provide your name, address, and comments. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward, provide your name, address, and your comments.
Good evening, I'm Chris Bianchi from 207 Gertrude Street. I'm speaking in opposition to the special use permit for 30818 North Kraus Ave, and I urge the planning commission to deny this application. The neighbors in the neighborhood were against a similar proposal that was presented to this commission back in 2013. In short, this neighborhood is not, this market is not needed in the neighborhood. There's a full-service supermarket that sells all the same items located less than 400 feet away, and it sells the same items that this applicant's requesting. This store basically sells junk food and tobacco, as he said. The applicant provides very little or no detail on the application on the nature and extent of the special use request. If you look at the application, special use requested section is left blank. How can the public truly understand what the applicant's seeking to do through this application without this information? Also, I found it odd that the environmental assessment form and special use permit application had different names completing both of them. With respect to the parking lot signage and green space, I know the applicant had had some communication with zoning back in 2014, and at that time, I had spoken with the executive director, Everett Nita, about that, and we had communicated that with the city, trying to get them to take some action on doing that. If you look at that diagram there, that's from 2014, so it's over 10 years old that that's happened. The signage on the building still says tobacco products, the sign at the corner has a hookah on it, and there's hookahs in the window. The proposed store does disturb existing characteristics of the surrounding area. There's flashing lights at the store, I saw the open sign was flashing when I walked by there last night. There's a lack of landscaping and parking lot signage, and that's just some of the issues that are bringing down the surrounding neighborhood. The lack of signage for entry and exiting that's there creates hazards on both Lodi and Kraus Ave. To my knowledge, this applicant's never had a valid certificate of use, and in the packet, there was a long list of code violations. Does this applicant have a certificate of use? If they don't, why are they allowed to remain in operation for as long as they have? That store's been there since 2015, so if it's been operating illegally, why are we allowing to do that? If we approve this, if you were to approve this today, what message does that send? That somebody was operating without the proper permits and can now come in front of the planning commission and asks to then become a legal operation? The store does not need to be in operation until as late as 10:00 PM. Similar markets nearby are only open until 8:00. That expectation should be made for this applicant so that the character of the surrounding neighborhood and Clinton Play Lot Park is not disturbed. And I'll wrap up my comments because, in the interest of time, thank you.
Thank you. Are there other individuals who would like to speak in opposition to the application? If so, please come forward with your name, address, and comments. You don't see anyone else writing to speak, and as I indicated earlier, the applicant, you have an opportunity to address comments made in opposition if you wish to do so. No, okay. Understood. So we'll close public comment on this application. And turn to seeker review.
Has everyone had a chance to review the EAF Part 1 prepared by the applicant and contained in your packet?
Yes.
Okay, has everyone had a chance to review the EAF Part 2, also contained in your packet?
Yes.
Does anyone believe the proposed action will have moderate to large impacts under seeker?
No.
Having determined there will be no moderate to large impacts, I recommend that the commission make a negative declaration under seeker and prepare the Part 3 EAF accordingly.
Thank you. Is there such a motion with regard to the seeker review?
I move to issue a negative seeker declaration?
Discussion on the seeker motion before us? There's no discussion, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Seeker motion is approved, and we may now turn to our consideration of the special use permit itself and any recommendation going forward from this body to the common council. Is there a motion for, put on the floor for discussion?
Yeah, I guess I have a question from my colleagues in the commission before we try and form a motion. Because you already have 10 conditions listed, and given the discussion today, it seems to me there's several other conditions that probably need to be added to that list, and might be kind of messy to do all of that. I'm just wondering if there'd be a possibility for the staff and the applicant to get together and to address some of these issues before we vote? Just a suggestion. Because there's a lot of questions about the SEPTED that still aren't entirely resolved. In order to put all that stuff into conditions, I think it might be problematic unless we simply say you have to accept all the SEPTED conditions.
Well, I mean, in practice, I think that was, part of the process is getting that expert advice from the police department and then, you know, evaluating it. As I said, I think from a staff review standpoint, we fully support everything that they've listed, and we recommend that everything that they recommend be part of the project. Of course, you have the ability to, you know, change that or amend that, but from our viewpoint, all of it should be included, and there's not much to be discussed. Should be something that is installed or, you know.
Implemented somehow.
Maybe somebody else, you know, should be there, I don't know.
Okay, well, that's fine, I mean, that clarifies the question. So that with the 10 conditions there right now, we can simply assert that that includes all of the SEPTED conditions, because there's a clause in there, Item 7, that indicates you have to have photographic evidence of the improvements, according to SEPTED, within 30 days of approval by the common council. So that would be sufficient to cover that if we're all comfortable with all of the SEPTED conditions being included. Does that make sense?
I think that I would move to deny the special permit at this time based on the SEPTED recommendations and the inability for the applicant to sell tobacco, which is clearly a part of the business model today, and for us to advance something that the applicant has not indicated they wish to do, just would, then I guess I don't see, that would be my initial thought.
Yeah, without prejudice. I would second that motion.
Discussion on that motion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say yea. Any abstentions? The motion carries, which is to deny without prejudice a special use permit for North Kraus and Lodi Street. Our next application, please.
Mr. Chairman, just for point of information, that means the person can reapply, because this doesn't mean they can't apply.
That's correct.
But they're just, just saying there's too many.
Opened and questions and issues, right.
Right, we can't narrow them down.
That's right. And the fundamental point that my colleague made about knowing the reality that tobacco cannot be sold at that site by anyone, you, me, or the applicant, kind of undermines the business model he described, and if he wishes to reimagine the proposal, what might be sold there, not including tobacco, that might be the basis for a new application.
Okay.
That would not need to wait for a full year, otherwise.
So if we go to the staff, they could help them narrow down what we're talking about tonight?
Yeah, including, you know, a site inspection as well, I think we could include that as well.
And perhaps addressing other comments raised in the public comment portion of the meeting as well. Always good to incorporate points that address comments made, legitimate comments made, even against the proposal.
Agreed.
So that is the action on the special use permit on Lodi. We move to the next item.
Yeah, next up, following along, I know we're a bit out of order, page 159 in your packet. It's a zoning map amendment, Z-2882 for 523-25. West Calvin Street owner is Creekside Landing Housing Development. Applicant is actually the City of Syracuse Office of Zoning Administration and the Zoning Administrator. I'll see if I can tee this up for the commission members. So there was a re-subdivision here days before rezone map was adopted. In a perfect world, that would have adjusted the map, and it would have been reflected when the map was adopted on July 1, 2023, but given that, you know, the filing of that and the official change with county, and when that actually comes back to us, we're kind of, you know, fixing it from back then to what it should have been. Hopefully, that makes sense. So what we're recommending is that we do this map change because it's the right thing to do, and it, you know, had it been reflected on the map, it would have came through that way, but given the resub was just a few days before the official adoption of the map, it still is as it sits today.
So we're going to take the re-subdivision first and then the.
No, no, that.
No, 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 West Calvin Street.
Oh, I'm sorry, right, right. When you reorder things.
Going to go to 159 and.
So any other information or context to add to this item before we look to public comment?
No, I don't think so, unless there's questions.
So with that information, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this zoning map amendment? Please come forward to provide your name, address, and comments. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the proposed zoning map amendment? Please come forward, provide your comments. We have no speakers of either category, we'll close the public comment and proceed to consider a motion for the map amendment.
Move to approve the motion for the map amendment.
My apologies.
And it is a recommendation.
We do have seekers.
Has everyone had a chance to, excuse me, review the EAF Part 1 contained in your packet and prepared by the applicant?
Yes.
And has everyone had a chance to review the EAF Part 2 proposed by staff and also contained in your packet?
Yes.
Does anyone believe the proposed action will have a moderate to large impact under seeker?
No.
Having determined there will not be a moderate to large impact under seeker, I recommend that the commission make a negative declaration under seeker and prepare the Part 3 EAF accordingly.
Thank you. Is there such a motion for the seeker review?
I move to assert a negative seeker declaration?
Do we have discussion on that seeker motion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? The seeker motion carries, and we can proceed to a motion on the map amendment per se.
Moved, I'm sorry. Moved to approve a positive recommendation for the zoning map amendment to the common council on Z-2882.
Discussion on that motion? See, no discussion, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? That recommendation now moves to the common council for final disposition. And we move further down our agenda.
Hey, go ahead, yes. We can, if the boards are ready, or we announce we do it after this one, but if. I'll leave it up to you.
Let's move on to Erie Boulevard, and then we'll circle back. Let's move on to Erie Boulevard and then we'll circle back.
Okay. All right.
We'll do a U-turn and...
Next up is what we're calling the Erie Boulevard West Parking Lot Project. It's a special use permit to establish the parking lot, but also major site plan review. So it's SP dash two-five dash zero-eight is the special use permit at seven hundred dash eighteen Erie Boulevard West in Van Rensselaer. And the companion major site plan review, MASP R dash two-five dash zero-two. Owners, James Rinali, applicant, CHA Consulting. This is in the MX three zone district.
So, good evening, Ben Harrell with CHA Consulting here on behalf of Marcellus Commons LLC, which is owned by the Rinalis. So as you can see on, well, I'll go to the, can we flip to the existing conditions quickly? So there's an existing building and parking lot on the site that's coming up now. You can see. And there's a long curb cut along Erie Boulevard and along Van Rensselaer. Both of those will be removed, replaced with full height curbing, new sidewalk. There's no sidewalk in this area currently. And green space between the sidewalk and the road and between the sidewalk and the new parking lot. That building is obviously going to be demolished and access will be through the former Tracy Street, which is now private property and also owned by the Rinalis. There will be an access easement. Granted, you can flip back to the other one. And a, the easement will be for access and where the parking encroaches slightly. As you can see, the property line is dashed through the northern side parking space. Obviously, that line is just on paper. So in order to make everything as efficient as possible, the parking will encroach and an easement will be filed with the county clerk for that. Everything meets rezone. We've got ADA spaces, landscaping, and trees. And we've worked with staff and will continue working with engineering to address all stormwater issues. Another benefit is currently the entire stormwater drainage area goes to combined sewers. It will now be going to a separated system. So I guess I'll open it to the board for any questions.
Questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I had a question. I was just trying to clarify on the easement rendering there. I understand you get the easement and then you have the new line, but there's going to be parking spaces on either side of that. So what, what's the treatment of what will be the easement line, so to speak, to separate those parking spaces on the Tracy Street side from your parking lot?
So it's all owned by the same owner, so there really is no separation. That's what the easement is for, so you can park across the property lines. If that makes sense.
Okay, so, so is there a treatment on the other side then, on Tracy Street side, to demarcate those parking spaces from the street?
So the street is private property. That was abandoned and that is owned by the Rinalis. That is not a city street. The curb cut is on Van Rensselaer. And then obviously between those two striped spaces is where you could call it a curb cut, even though it'll all be asphalt into this new...
Do you mean a, do you mean a raised curb?
Well, I'm just wondering, what is demarcating Tracy Street from the parking lot? And the parking spaces that are there, I don't...
It'll all act as one single parking lot in a way.
Currently operates like a driveway, for lack of a better word.
Yes, exactly.
So cars will be able to just pull into the parking space off of Tracy?
Yes.
Okay.
Because Tracy...
That's what I was trying to understand.
It's labeled as Tracy Street, but it is private property. It's no longer a city street.
Okay, thank you.
It does operate like a driveway.
I didn't have time to drive down there to see, so that's why. Thank you. Appreciate that.
So Ben, I have one question. Is there, is there proposed, and I might have missed it? Most of the lot right now is fenced in a black rotting area.
Yes.
Is that proposed?
Yes, along, well, it will butt up to the building to the left. It won't circle the entire lot. It'll make an L shape.
Along here in the green space and landscape and not touch it.
It's not going to be on the inside? Right, okay. And the sidewalk is obviously on the outside?
Further questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there individuals who wish to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come forward, offer your comments. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. We have no speakers for this application. We'll close public comment and proceed to seeker review.
Has everyone had a chance to review the EAF Part One prepared by the applicant and contained in your packet?
Yes.
Has everyone had a chance to review the EAF Part Two prepared by staff and contained in your packet?
Yes.
Does anyone believe that the proposed action will have a moderate to large impact under seeker?
No.
Having determined that there will be no moderate to large impacts, I recommend that the commission make a negative declaration under seeker and prepare the Part Three EAF accordingly.
Motion to that effect?
Move to issue a negative seeker declaration?
Discussion on the seeker motion? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Seeker motion is approved and we may now consider a recommendation for the common council on the special use permit application.
Uh, just a note and for the record, the seeker was really for both and I just want to affirm that seeker was to both, you know, for the major site plan review and for the establishment of the parking lot, which requires a special use permit.
Yes.
We thought that was the case.
Just want to make the record clear.
So there's actually two items that require an action. So we can start with the special use permit.
Recommendation?
Make a motion for a positive recommendation for the common council for SP dash twenty-five oh-eight with six conditions beyond the general commissions, conditions as presented by the staff on page one seventy-eight of the staff analysis for the packet.
Discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Special use permit recommendation goes to the common council. And now we are looking at the major site plan review, the same project down Erie Boulevard and Van Rensselaer. Is there a motion for this item? Is there a question?
No, just Jake wanted to confirm that we approved the special use permit with the recommended condition.
Yes, he identified the page number two.
Very thorough.
And we're going to do the same.
And we'll do the same thing this, this time. So move approval, MASP R dash twenty-five dash oh-two with seven conditions presented on page one eighty-one of the staff analysis of the application. And these are beyond the standard general conditions.
Discussion on that motion? There's no discussion, then all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? The major site plan review is approved. And now we'll circle back to the housing strategy item that we paused on earlier.
Yes. Next up is the Syracuse Housing Strategy Implementation Urban Renewal Plan. The applicant is the Syracuse Urban Renewal Agency and represented by Michelle Sapansky, Deputy Commissioner of Neighborhood Development.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Michelle Sapansky, Deputy Commissioner of Neighborhood Development with the city. So the item that you have before you for the adoption of the, an updated Syracuse Urban Renewal Plan is an item that has kind of grown out of the work that the city has been doing to advance a number of different housing policies in the last year. So in 2024, as you may recall, there was three pretty significant pieces of housing-related legislation that was authorized by the common council. So the first of those being the authorization of the Syracuse Housing Strategy is kind of the comprehensive framework for looking to address the city's identified housing market and affordability needs. The second was the establishment of the Syracuse Housing Strategies Corporation as a new local development corporation and public authority. I'm really kind of charged with being the implementation entity to help advance the recommendations that were identified within the course of the strategy. And then the third of those was the authorization of the first general fund allocation for housing to support the seed funding of the Housing Strategies Corporation. So as we have been kind of working through the mechanics of the launching of the Syracuse Housing Strategies Corporation and kind of figuring out the logistics of accessing some of those funds, the recommendation that we have received both from the city's Corporation Council as well as outside council for the Syracuse Housing Strategies Corporation is that the most effective way for us to be able to kind of facilitate the allocation of those dollars that was authorized by, within the council budget, is to leverage the special powers that lie with the Syracuse Urban Renewal Agency. So a big reason for that, I think, kind of number one, independent of the allocation of general fund dollars for this purpose, I think it would, it's fair to say that it's a just good practice that SURA would look to kind of amend and revise its urban renewal plans to reflect the kind of larger policy of the city as a whole. So there's a precedent of us doing that, most recently in 2013, shortly after the establishment of the Greater Syracuse Land Bank. The boundaries of the SURA area were amended at that time to expand, to include more areas of properties that were tax delinquent. So really just kind of allows us a little bit more flexibility within the bounds of kind of our planning work. Obviously, a lot of the work of neighborhood and business development happens under the umbrella of SURA. So it's just a good practice to update it, kind of to mirror what the council has approved. But I think as it pertains really critically to the implementation of the work, a significant reason for the adoption of the budget allocation is to be able to provide financial assistance to homeowners for the purposes of updating, rehabbing housing, preserving the housing stock. There are very specific provisions within New York state laws and the state constitution around the circumstances in which municipal funds can be used, particularly with regards to private residences. And so it is the opinion of council for both the city and the Housing Strategies Corporation that we are able to kind of make sure that we stay in compliance with all of those provisions by leveraging the roles that SURA has to be able to kind of carry out specific efforts to address blight and decline and kind of prevent blight and decline. So the SURA, we have kind of put together a draft SURA plan that effectively mirrors the housing strategy exactly as it was already adopted and approved by the common council. That draft plan has gone to the SURA board for its approval and then it is now here before you this evening for you to review and affirm that it, number one, to make it the seeker determination about it. Number two, to ensure that it is in compliance with the comprehensive plan as it currently stands. And then number three, that it aligns with kind of some of the provisions within state municipal law related to urban renewal agencies, the most relevant of which is that the area in which the urban renewal activities will be carried out are appropriate for those sorts of activities. So I think kind of the, the language that's the most relevant here, for those of you who had a chance to take a look at the housing strategy, really kind of calls us into focus the need to delineate activities specific to neighborhoods that are already experiencing distress conditions. Those are very much already the activities that SURA is doing and the current geographic boundary under its existing plan very much aligns with that. But it also recommended the inclusion of additional additive work in neighborhoods that are kind of experiencing a lot more middle, kind of average conditions overall, but are very much vulnerable to decline. And so that vulnerable to decline piece is very significant as it pertains to what you are all being asked to kind of review and affirm. So I think that, that's kind of the highlights of it. I don't know if folks have any questions. Happy to answer those.
Thank you. Great summary. First of all, questions from the commission members regarding this?
Addressing the motion, et cetera. Because I certainly, it's consistent with the vision plan. It's consistent with the goals in the comprehensive plan. I do think there are some, actually, some of the goals that could be added rather than just F three, which is in the application. So certainly it's consistent with everything, the assets that Legacy quarters. To me, they're consistent. I don't really have any questions unless we want to add things to emphasize the consistency with other goals.
No, I think those are all, all good points. And I can try to usher you through this to make sure everything's covered. But as Michelle said, your role as this governing body, a performing seeker and, and making that determination under seeker is to certify whether, you know, the urban renewal plan complies with GML Section five oh-two-seven. And secondly, whether it conforms to the findings made by the common council, as Michelle said. So there's kind of, the first thing is to discuss if needed if the proposed Housing Strategy Implementation Urban Renewal Plan conforms to Syracuse comp plan as a whole. I'm not going to read all of that, but I, I think if you all agree, I think you can say, you know, that you agree and we can keep moving through it that way if that sounds good. Yeah, this is, this is all on page twenty of your packet as well, continuing to twenty-one if you want to.
So that would be sufficient for the, the statement of emotion, just that we occur?
That sounds good. Right, yep. You want to do that first before we go through this?
I think so. If we don't have questions for you right now and it doesn't seem as though we do, we will ask for a public comment for and against and then return to this discussion more substantively.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. So is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this item, the housing strategy? If so, please come forward, provide your name, address, and comments. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the item, please come forward and offer your comments. Okay, we have no speakers on this one. Let's return to our discussion on procedure and first, perhaps our seeker review would be in order.
Has everyone had a chance to review the EAF Part One that has been distributed to you tonight?
Yes.
Has everyone had a chance to review the EAF Part Two prepared by staff and also distributed to you tonight?
Yes.
Do any of you believe the proposed action will have a moderate to large impact under seeker?
No.
No.
Having determined there will be no moderate to large impact, I recommend that the commission make a negative declaration under seeker and to prepare the Part Three EAF accordingly.
Thank you. Is there such a motion for our seeker review?
Move to issue a negative seeker declaration?
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the seeker motion? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? The seeker motion carries. And now for our action on the actual strategy renewal plan.
So I, I think there is no other action on this. We're just doing seeker. So if we want to have these discussions, I think we need to have that. And that's, I'm sorry, this is a bit confusing. We've only gone through this one time from what I can recall. There's a 2013 amendment, maybe the chairman recalls. But that's what I was trying to ask you is if this should be discussed and deliberated before seeker is actually, you know, before you go through that and make a determination. But that is all we're doing with this item this evening.
That's correct. So we did seeker, so if their action is the discussion, then we need to do seeker first.
Okay.
So they can discuss.
Okay.
So we discuss, but we don't vote because you don't need a recommendation after our discussion? We've already taken care of that?
Right. Right, and our role is just to make a determination under seeker, or your role.
That was straightforward, from what our materials was. That was quite straightforward, I thought.
Right. So where we left off was just confirming if the urban renewal plan meets the intent of the comp plan's vision statement, and Commissioner Lentz mentioned other supporting goals besides F3. And one of the things to consider is, you know, what goals does the proposed urban renewal plan meet? And if there's discussion points on that beyond F3, you can maybe do that.
Yeah. I mean, I would submit that I do believe it advances F1, and F1 is to continue the process of periodic revising neighborhood and business development plan as new policies are implemented, which is exactly what, why we're doing this. So it certainly supports that goal. And I do think it is, it supports the second goal, which is to encourage homeownership. Certainly, providing this program, especially in asset corridors, it promotes homeownership. So it seems to me it certainly present, supports those two goals as well as Goal Three.
Great. So do we want a motion to that effect, be on the record?
Discuss.
Are you done with the whole discussion?
Yeah, we should probably continue through everything and then go from there. But, so next up would be discussing the housing strategy implementation, urban renewal plan conforms to the finding that in adopting the housing plan back in September of 2014, that the council determined that certain neighborhoods described and were blighted and having blighting influence on the surrounding area, that, you know, that area was appropriate for reconstruction, rehab, and concentrated efforts from code enforcement in combination with, with these and/or other methods. So are asset clusters and legacy clusters appropriate for urban renewal in discussing that?
Yeah, I mean, I certainly feel they are. My only concern is my house is not in one of the clusters. Not for the minutes, please.
Certainly, the concentration and the ability to identify both our activity and the resources to create a greater stabilization, particularly as Mel and Michelle referred to those neighborhoods who are middle and may be needing not 100% attention in every home, but every third or fourth home may need a little bit of help to stabilize a whole block.
Before they reach the tipping point and go in the other direction.
Strategy as well as kind of the, what you all would be authorizing within the context of the urban renewal plan is, covers all neighborhoods that are addressed with it, either as a distressed neighborhood or as a kind of middle asset neighborhood within that plan. So even if it wasn't necessarily recommended for kind of a first wave at this point, the idea is that we're launching kind of rolling waves of new neighborhoods every two years or so. So it covers all those areas.
I understand that, Michelle, the whole city was reviewed.
Correct.
And included in the original strategy to begin.
Yep.
So ultimately, every neighborhood block, et cetera, will have attention somehow.
Yep, correct.
Ultimate.
And the assessment has sort of been done, and as you indicate, things change over time, and is there a mechanism or procedure in place to kind of revisit that from time to time? Things don't change overnight, usually, but...
Yeah, I expect that based on kind of what we've seen from cities, peer cities, that we've been working with in conjunction with our consultants from CZB, who have been working on this, and they're a little bit further down the road than we are, but I think that we would be looking to kind of reevaluate conditions in five years. So do kind of a full reassessment of the baseline data that we took of all of the exterior property conditions, specific to the areas where we've been working, and kind of use that as a temperature check of where are we making progress? Are there places that we need to adjust? And certainly, as we need to, based on kind of circumstances that change, would look to repeat this exercise, should we need to, so.
Five years could, could be a long time. I'm just thinking of our own community and some of the development we think is going to happen in the short term, relatively short term.
Yeah.
We might see accelerated change, plus or minus.
Yeah, no, and I certainly appreciate that. I would say, too, that there's, within kind of the success metrics, there's, they're very much conducive to doing things, certain aspects of them, to doing kind of on a yearly basis. So things like kind of looking to see what changes in homeownership rates are, decreases in poverty, increases in property tax value, decreases in crime annually, all of those things are things that we have the capacity to measure each year and expect that we would be doing so, as sort of kind of like incremental points. I don't know that we're necessarily going to fully come out with a new study as a comprehensive document, but we'll certainly be taking checkpoints along the way.
And I think the actual time interval is less important than the fact that you're focused on that point.
Yeah, absolutely.
You'll be simi, evaluating a lot of data between now and whatever point in time you make changes.
Oh, yeah. All kinds of data.
Okay, good. I'm reassured. More on this discussion, on this point?
No, thank you.
I'm good. Yes. With that, I would say that the Planning Commission has done their due diligence in certifying the two items that we had to certify.
And we proceed further on our agenda.
Yeah, 211 in your packets, if you're following along. Next up is titled Syracuse University Waverly and Comstock Residence Halls. There's a Waverly Residence Hall project, which includes a resubdivision and a project planner view, and Comstock Residence Hall, which includes a resubdivision and a project planner view as well.
Could you go to the second slide, please? Could you go to the second slide, please? Evening. My name is Joe Alfieri, Director of Campus Plan and Design and Construction at Syracuse University. We're here tonight to present two new Residence Hall projects to be constructed as part of the university's housing strategy. They'll be built across from each other on Comstock Avenue at the 300 block of Waverly and 500 block of Comstock Avenue. To be clear, the university is not increasing enrollment, nor is it changing its two-year residence requirement. The new facilities being presented tonight will replace functionally obsolete housing, provide a new replacement for, a much-needed replacement for the Kimmel Dining Hall, and allow for relocation of a significant portion of our sophomore class from South Campus to Main Campus. This will improve the student experience, reduce duplicative services between the Main Campus and the South Campus, and add to the vitality of the Main Campus environment. These two new Residence Halls will also provide us with some critical swing space to allow for renovation of our older Residence Halls. The new buildings have been designed to comply with zoning requirements. Please note that the university is not seeking approval for zoning application at tonight's hearing, however, we are requesting the Planning Commission issue a seeker negative declaration tonight. As your packet shows, we have spent extensive analysis of potential environmental impacts, including professional third-party consultant analysis, and have proposed measures where appropriate to assure there are no resulting significant adverse environmental impacts. First, thank you for having us on the agenda tonight. And with me are Daniel Lee, Architect and Principal at Boland Swissock Jackson, who will be presenting the project, Kirk Nardberg, who you know, CEO and Managing Partner at King King Architects, and Greg Fochet, Whiteman, O'Sullivan, and Hanna, outside council for the university. I'll now turn over the presentation to Daniel Lee to present the design of the facilities.
Good evening. Good to see you again.
You can move wherever you want. That's just tradition, to stand in front of the mic.
Okay.
It's not working tonight.
All right, well, I'll speak, I'll speak loudly and clearly.
So move wherever you need to be for the presentation.
Okay, so because these are considered two separate projects, I'll describe them individually and then take questions at your pleasure. So if you, actually, we can just stay here. So the first project is on the left. It's surrounded by Waverly Avenue towards the south, Comstock Avenue towards the east, and Marshall along the north, and its western boundary is the existing Tote Hall and the existing Waverly surface lot. Intentionally, we have tried to design this building to be respectful of the historic district, the Walnut Park Historic District, so you will note that the wings of the Residence Hall step down towards the west to minimize visual impact to the historic district. I should zoom out for a moment. This building, Waverly Student Residence Hall, is about roughly 310,000 square feet, comprising of approximately 720 beds within 235 units. The site is approximately two acres, and we've identified approximate heights of the surrounding buildings on the aerial perspective here and referencing the number of stories in the Residence Hall proposed from adjacent grade. You will see that the, complementing the residential units are accessory spaces and uses such as dining hall and food services, multipurpose rooms, teaching kitchens, and common social areas. The overall design features two prominent north-south wings along the western edge and the eastern edge, connected by a shorter east-west wing. The wing along Comstock Avenue is slightly rotated and offset to minimize the perceived length of the block, and it also steps down towards Waverly, allowing that more graceful pedestrian experience as you enter and away from Main Campus. It also brings light into this terrace that you see here, identified as one story, which is above the dining hall. It also, as I mentioned, steps down to the west, towards the historic district, maintaining respect for the smaller-scale buildings within that historic district, also creating a separation from Walnut Avenue, minimizing visual impact, as I mentioned. Stepping down towards Waverly Avenue maximizes daylight. There are these, maybe it's hard to see in this view, but obliquely at the ends of these wings are vertical lounges, these kind of glassy social lanterns, kind of creating transparent ends to the, to the wings. The primary pedestrian path and access point is on the northwest corner of Comstock and Waverly Avenues, and, and the loading facilities is actually along Marshall Street, separating the service from the main pedestrian access. The building materials, scale, and overall aesthetics of the project are complementary with the surrounding Syracuse University Residential Hall context, including, if you zoom out for a moment, the nine-story Ernie Davis Hall to the southeast, Dell Plain to the east of that, and the five-story Watson Hall directly south. Another design intention is to lower the levels along Waverly to be complementary with Watson Hall, which is five-story directly to the south of Waverly Avenue. And the, actually, is it Haven Hall, which is also 11 stories? So the taller aspects of the project are complementary to the surrounding context of the site. If you scroll down a bit, you can see some elevations. So it's, obviously, there's a lot of stepping up and down in each of these elevations, so it's hard to tell what's going on in the foreground, but I hope you were able to study a bit more closely in your packets. Continuing on to the Comstock project. Similar use type, there is about 580 beds within 195 units. The site here is slightly smaller, it's about an acre and a half, and the total gross square feet is about 225,000 square feet. Similar accessory uses, maker space, community kitchen, common social areas, multipurpose rooms. Overall, similar to the Waverly Residence Hall, the overall design features two prominent north-south wings, connected by a shorter east-west wing. And again, the primary pedestrian access point and entry to the project will be at the northeast corner of Comstock and Waverly Avenues. So we're creating this kind of focus point of pedestrian access for complementary buildings. And the massing here steps down to the east to preserve the views to and from Booth Hall. The proposed Residence Hall is significantly buffered from visual adjacency with the Thornden Park Historic District, as the existing Booth Hall is of similar height and located at the top of the hill to the east. The step-down nature of the proposed building, along with the separation that will exist from Ostrom Avenue with Booth Hall between, minimizes visual impacts of the Thornden Park Historic District's defining characteristics. The new Comstock Residence Hall also enhances the visual characteristics of the adjacency with Booth Hall as previously the site was, had the Comstock garage, which will be demolished. The building materials, scale, and overall aesthetics of the project are complementary, again, with the surrounding Syracuse University Residence Halls. And I think if you scroll down, you could see kind of the two buildings in site plan. And in your packet, as we scroll down past the elevations, we've identified the, the approximate heights of each wing, and you can compare that with the surrounding existing buildings. You can keep, you can keep scrolling. Actually, if you just keep going all the way down. So there are the two site plans. So I, you can see the, initially, maybe I should zoom out a bit. The Waverly site included the, the surface lot, and we are proposing a resubdivision to exclude the surface lot from this project, maintaining a clear boundary of the historic And it's not identified, well, it is slightly identified, but all the setbacks are in compliance with the front, side, rear yards. Happy to take any questions.
Are there, excuse me, are there questions for the applicant?
I really appreciate the work that you've done with the design and the step-down to mirror the surrounding buildings on the southern side and on the western side. I just, you've done a lot of good work in trying to reflect also the other buildings around the other sides. What I'm a bit concerned about, I'm not sure something could be done about at this point, but over the years, every new building that goes up Comstock becomes more and more of a walled canyon. And so it just seems that, that the treatments that you've done on these buildings and other buildings have done really good to reflect everything except for Comstock, and Comstock now becomes a canyon of walled buildings. Just a general comment on what seems to be happening in that area.
Yeah, we share the same concerns, so as I mentioned, we try to offset and angle kind of that long, those, these wings along the Comstock Avenue to minimize that perception.
Right. I guess the other question I have or comment is, it's not really about the design as it is, but traffic on Waverly during construction. Because there's a lot of traffic on Waverly. Seldom a day goes by that I don't drive down Waverly two or three times. So I'm just wondering what the plan is for handling traffic on Waverly during the road to the long construction period.
Fortunately, I'm not a contractor.
I can just answer just generally speaking. We have, we have recently awarded this construction project, and as you know, we're sitting down with those construction managers here shortly.
We're sitting down with the construction managers here shortly, starting out the logistics of the project as a member themselves, they're not stepping into other studies during construction, but also how people would be getting to and from the sites. First, just the general contractors' day-to-day, then for major events like loading of frames and construction, concrete boards and the like. So we'll mostly be using, our intention is to use South Campus as a logistical hub and getting the contractor parking and working with them for the transportation network.
Which project launch goes first, or do they launch in tandem?
The first project's gonna get started just a little bit ahead of the these, but they do all have the August of '27.
Historic deadline. Immovable deadline.
Yes.
I will follow up, Mr. Lentz. There is no added parking designed into these projects.
Right.
Just moving the pieces around.
Do you anticipate being able to keep two lanes of traffic on Waverly, or is that gonna end up maybe being shut down for a while, or it might have to be one lane of traffic?
We've just gotten to the beginning of the logistical plan on this, but I don't see the need to be taking a lane at this point. We do think when you sidewalk closures and redirect pedestrians, we're not taking any lane of traffic.
Other questions for the applicant?
I have a couple, David. On the Waverly Residence Hall, which if I'm reading correctly, that's gonna be your tallest building at the moment, right? At 121.
So the height, right.
Television, right? And I'm assuming also because of the grade, that when I look at it, if I'm in Thornden Park as an example, and I look down to the four buildings, Haven and Waverly will be almost equal in height, right? I think.
So I think what's key for it's above sea level.
Yep.
So if you scroll down to Waverly, it's, man, my eyes are failing me, but I believe it's under 670 feet above sea level.
669.
And Comstock, well, Booth is 691. So because, although it's taller in stories, because the grade drops along the western side, in totality, it's still shorter than Booth.
All right. But I do think, I think that the visual is going to be pretty close in most instances. And on Waverly, in the back towards the Walnut District, the university owns that parking lot, as I understand it, which is now gonna be resubbed out, not part of this, for whatever use the university's gonna decide later on. In the meantime, you've designed a hardscape and landscape sort of, my question, is it a buffer, is, or is it usable as a terrace patio place?
Can I say yes to both?
You could.
So it will be a landscape buffer and hardscape for outdoor enjoyment.
Okay. So it can be used?
Yes.
Great. Okay. Thanks.
Other comments or questions for the applicant? I just want to comment, I appreciated the decision to do your secret review. I know these are two independent projects, but then you also put them together and took that view as well. I, it didn't necessarily, in this instance, result in any different sort of determination, but I think it's a good practice, given the proximity of these two very large projects to one another, and after this were to happen again in the city in another location, I hope that kind of process would prevail as well. I think it's a, it's a good practice, I appreciated that effort.
Okay, then. So just so staff can inform the board, as Mr. Alfieri noted, we will just be doing secret tonight, so this was, I appreciate them and thank them for introducing the resub and the project plan reviews, but this is strictly to introduce the project and go through the secret review for the two projects. I recommend that we, if you're gonna have a public comment open, that you keep that open, and then we hope to have all these items back at a subsequent meeting, if not the next meeting on the 15th, the meeting after that, hopefully, as we complete final city departmental reviews.
Sounds good. So I don't think there are any more questions from the commission members for the applicant, so that is settled. So we will now entertain a public comment on these projects, so anyone, although they're different projects, I would say anyone wishing to speak in favor of either one of them, please come forward at this point, provide your name, address, and your comments on either or both projects. And seeing no one rise to speak, I will then offer the opportunity to those who wish to speak in opposition to either project to come forward and offer your comments after providing your name and address. So no individuals this evening on these projects, different to our colleague, I will indicate that all the comment will remain open, and...
The type one.
So this will be a combined seeker, as noted, it's a type-one action, so I will be walking you through this this evening, and I'll try to do it as efficiently as I can.
Yes, no.
So, the full environmental assessment form, Part II, on page 339, has been prefilled out with suggestions from our staff. I'll be walking you through Part II of the EAF to see if you agree with those suggestions. Additionally, we just gave you a proposed attachment for Part III determination of significance and a draft resolution provided by our staff that you could use if you decide and when, when and if you decide to act on seeker this evening. Part II of the FEAF is an issue-spouting exercise where the board will discuss if there are any potential impacts that need to be analyzed in more detail in Part III of the FEAF. So here we go, we have 18 items. Impact on land. The first question involves the impacts to land. Because this is a project that does involve construction and physical alteration of land, we recommend that the board answer this question yes. Does the board agree?
Yes.
The sub-questions A through G are asking about the depth to water table, slope of the site, exposed bedrock, excavation and removal of natural materials, potential erosions, duration of the construction, and if the action is in a coastal erosion hazard area. Based on the information provided in Part I of the FEAF, the response letter, and the supplementary materials, the action will not involve construction on land with shallow water table, exposed or shallow bedrocks, or within a coastal erosion hazard area. Therefore, I recommend you check no or small to no impact for the sub-questions A, C, and G. Does the board agree?
Yes.
Okay, now we're gonna jump to sub-question B, which indicates that considering the lot sizes of the two project sites, approximately 11.53% of both properties contain slopes more than 15%. Per the response provided by the applicant, the project will grade the property for the construction without creating slopes greater than 15%, and the applicant will utilize erosion control and soil stabilization measures, including stabilized construction entrances, stormwater inlet protection, installation of a silt fence, and other temporary erosion control practices to mitigate the erosion impact on sloped project site. Therefore, I recommend you check no or small impact for the sub-question B. Does the board agree?
Yes.
Onto D. Sub-question D indicates that project, that the project will involve the excavation and removal of more than 1,000 tons of natural material. This sub-question triggers concerns about potential erosions, unstable land, and disposable, and disposal of materials. Per the response provided by the applicant, the excavation will be accomplished by standard mechanical equipment and will not involve blasting or driving piles. The applicant will use sheet piling and shoring to stabilize the site and to mitigate potential soil erosion caused by the material removal. In addition, all excavated soils will be disposed of off-site at Hanson-Jamesville Quarry Facility. Therefore, I recommend you check no or small impact for the sub-questions D. Does the board agree?
Yes.
Sub-question E indicates that the project is expected to last for approximately 26 months. The long-term construction triggers concern on noise and dust impact on nearby properties. Per the response, all contractors will be obligated to comply with the City of Syracuse noise ordinance to mitigate noise impact. The applicant will apply standard dust management practices such as watering down the site, stabilized stone construction entrance, and stone drive lanes around the building to mitigate dust impact. Therefore, I recommend you check no or small impact for the sub-question E. Does the board agree?
Yes.
And number two, impact of geological features. The second question involves the impact on geological features. We recommend that the board answer this question no, because there are no unique geological features within or near the project site. Does the board agree?
Yes.
Onto number three, impact on surface water. Third question involves the impact on surface water. We recommend that the board answer no to this question because there are no water bodies close to the project site, and the project will not withdraw water from nearby surface water bodies. Rather, the project will utilize and enhance the existing water utility connections that connect to the city water. Does the board agree?
Yes.
Number four, impact on groundwater. We recommend that the board answer no to this question because the project will be connected to the existing city water and sewer services. It is not located above any aquifers that are used for drinking water, and the usage of pesticides will follow the integrated pest management practices to minimize reliance on chemical pesticides and to mitigate potential harm to humans, animals, and the environment. Does the board agree?
Yes.
Number five, impact on flooding. Because the project will not result in development on land subject to flooding and a SWIP containing construction of an onsite underground stormwater detention system, which requires compliance to and approval from the New York State Department, DEC standards, will be provided prior to building and site permit approval. We recommend that the board answers this question no. Does the board agree?
Yes.
Number six, impact on air. We recommend that the board answer no to this question because this project does not require federal or state air emission permits and does not include air emission sources. Does the board agree?
Yes.
Number seven, impact on plants and animals. The property is a developed lot located within an urban setting. Per the environmental assessment done by the applicant, there is no evidence that northern long-eared bat, there it is, or suitable habitat existed on the property. There are no registered national natural landmarks on the property, and the action will not require a conversion of more than 10 acres of forest, grasslands, or any other regionally or locally important habitat. Therefore, we recommend that the board answer this question no. Does the board agree?
Yes.
Number eight, impact on agricultural resources. Agricultural resources, there we go. We recommend that the board answer no to this question because there are no agricultural resources in the vicinity of the project area. Does the board agree?
Yes.
Number nine, impact on aesthetic resources. We recommend that the board answer no to this question because there is no aesthetic resources recognized on or close to the project site. Does the board agree? Number 10, impact on historic and archaeological resources. The project will not occur on any lands that have been listed or deemed eligible for the National or State Register and will not result in the destruction or alteration of any historic and/or archaeological resources, but will occur substantially contiguous to one district and multiple properties which are listed on the National or State Register of Historical Places or are eligible for listing on the State Register of Historic Places. Therefore, we recommend the board answer yes to this question. Does the board agree?
Yes.
Based on the information provided in Part I of the FEAF, the response letter, and the supplementary materials, the action will involve construction neither on or nearby sensitive archaeological site nor an archaeological site that is not included on the New York Chippewa inventory. Therefore, I recommend you check no or small impact on the sub-questions B and C. Does the board agree?
Yes.
Just need a good sip of water here, quick. Okay, sub-question A indicates that the project will occur substantially contiguous to the Walnut Park Historic District parking lot, which used to be Tau Epsilon Phi Fraternity at 907 Walnut Ave., Delta Phi Epsilon Sorority at 905 Walnut Ave., and Haven Hall at 400 Comstock Ave., Booth Hall at 505 Comstock Ave., Delplane Hall at 601 Comstock, Watson Hall at 316 Waverly Ave., and the Epsilon Alpha Chapter House at 300 Waverly Ave. You can tell I wasn't in Greek life. Per the response letter and historic resource assessment prepared by King-King Architect, the two dormitory buildings are designed in a way to match the heights and characteristics of surrounding properties. The proposed dormitory buildings will be in a stepped-down design, considering the stories of adjacent existing structures, and will be respectful to small-scaled structures in the Historic District. The two buildings will use the same materials, which are predominantly utilized in the adjacent existing buildings along the Comstock Avenue corridor. Landscaping buffers will be installed between the Waverly Residence Hall and the Walnut Park Historic District to further mitigate visual impact on the Historic District. The proposed material, scale, and aesthetic of the two buildings are designed to be complementary with the surrounding Syracuse University Residence Hall's context in order to minimize any visual impacts and to be compatible with the defining characteristics. In addition, by implementing the SWIP, dust and noise control practices, and sheet piling and shoring during excavation, the construction impact on the surrounding historic properties and district will be further mitigated. Therefore, I recommend that the board answer no or small impact for sub-question A. Does the board agree?
Yes.
Onto number 11, impact on open space and recreation. I recommend that the board answer no to this question because there are no designated open spaces or recreational resources that will be affected by this project. Does the board agree?
Yes.
Number 12, impact on critical environmental areas. We recommend the board answer no to this question because the project site does not contain nor is adjacent to a critical environmental area. Does the board agree?
Yes.
13, impact on transportation. The project will not result in a significant adverse impact on existing transportation systems or traffic patterns. The two new dormitory buildings are mainly used to relocate second-year students from South Campus to the main campus. Per the response in the traffic impact assessment, due to Syracuse University's practice for on-campus student parking, which requires that second-year students keep their vehicles parking on South Campus, the project will not generate a large amount of new traffic and parking demands. There are plenty of existing on-street parking spaces available for temporary parking. The traffic impact assessment also indicates that there will not be a significant decrease on the level of services at the nearby traffic intersections. Project will not degrade existing transit access and existing pedestrian or bicycle accommodations. Therefore, we recommend that this question be answered no. Does the board agree?
Yes.
14, impact on energy. The project will cause an increase in the use of energy. Therefore, we recommend that the board answer yes to this question. Does the board agree?
Yes.
Based on the information provided in Part I of the FEAF, the response letter, and the supplementary materials, the project will not require a new or an upgrade to an existing substation or the creation of an extension of an energy transmission or supply system to serve more than 50 single- system to serve more than 50 single- or two-family residences or to serve commercial or industrial use. Therefore, we recommend that the board check no or small impact may occur for sub-question A and B. Does the board agree?
Yes.
Sub-question C indicates that the project will utilize more than 2,500 megawatt-hours per year of electricity. Per the will-serv letter, the existing electricity infrastructure has sufficient capacity to accommodate the increased demand. In addition, the project will use LED lighting to reduce electricity demand. Therefore, we recommend the board check no or small impact may occur for sub-question C. Does the board agree?
Yes.
Sub-question D indicates that the project will involve heating or cooling of more than 100,000 square feet of building area. Per the response letter, the project will use modern energy efficiency design and equipment, including energy recovery, ventilator-type air handling units which can recover energy between supply and exhaust air streams to the air handling unit to reduce heating and cooling loads. Therefore, we recommend that the board check no or small impact may occur for sub-question D. Does the board agree?
Yes.
Almost home. 15, impact on noise, odor, and light. We recommend that the board answer yes to this question because the project will result in an increase in noise and outdoor lighting. Does the board agree?
Yes.
Based on the information provided in Part 1 of the FEAF, the response letter, and the supplementary materials, the project will not involve blasting activity, will not result in routine odors for more than one hour per day, will not result in light shining onto adjoining properties or creating sky glow brighter than existing area conditions. Therefore, we recommend that the board check no or small impact may occur for sub-question B through E. Does the board agree?
Yes.
Last one for 15. Sub-question A indicates that the project will produce sound above noise levels established by local regulation. Per the response letter, all contractors will be obligated to comply with the City of Syracuse Noise Ordinance to mitigate noise impact. Therefore, we recommend that the board check no or small impact may occur for sub-question A. Does the board agree?
Yes.
16, impact on human health. The project site does not have any history of contamination or spills and is not in the environmental site remediation database. Additionally, the project will not involve construction or modification of a solid waste management facility, and the solid waste generated during construction and operation will be removed and disposed of in compliance with all state, federal, and local laws and regulations. Thus, we recommend that the board answer no to this question. Does the board agree?
Yes.
17, consistency with community plans. We recommend that the board answer no to this question because the action is consistent with the development standards of planned institutional districts and the adopted district plan of Syracuse University Sub-District Number 7. The surrounding properties are occupied by institutional uses and student housings. The proposed dormitories are not in sharp contrast to surrounding land use patterns. Does the board agree?
Yes.
18, consistency with community character. The project will not replace or eliminate existing facilities, structures, or areas of historic importance to the community, will not create a demand for additional community services, will not interfere with the use or enjoyment of officially recognized or designated public resources, and is designed to be consistent with predominant architectural scale and character of the surrounding properties. Therefore, I recommend that the board answer no to this question. Does the board agree?
Yes.
And finally, in conclusion, the Commission as lead agency in this coordinated review under the State Environmental Quality Review Act has thoroughly reviewed all relevant materials, has taken a hard look and analyzed all aspects of the action. For all the reasons set forth above, the Commission determines that the action will not have any significant adverse impacts on the environment, and therefore, an environmental impact statement need not be prepared. Accordingly, the Commission issues a negative declaration to be filed, and notice of the negative declaration will be provided pursuant to all applicable laws and regulations. And I need a drink.
You know, we can get AI to do that.
You know, that's a great idea.
Where's the warm?
Rise and fall of human voice.
So that counts as our formal vote on Seeker?
Yes.
Let's count it out.
And everything's open, right?
Yes, and we'll continue to work with all city reviewing departments to finalize formal comments or anything needed with our university partners and hopes to get it back on the next agenda as soon as we can.
Thank you.
Bye, Greg.
All right. Real quick before we get into the next item, is this in there? You can, I'm holding a resolution that you can choose to make a motion on and adopt this evening if you choose. For the Seeker, yeah.
No, do you want it?
I would like to.
Felton suspender motion on the Seeker for two dorms.
And yes, I'm sorry, what are we saying? You do want to vote?
I have the resolution, so if you want to adopt this resolution, you can make a motion, we can get that over with.
Okay.
Or I sit and use the resolution that's been prepared.
So moved?
Second.
Second.
Discussion on this motion for the resolution. If there's no discussion, all in favor, please syndicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions, it carries. So we'll take care of that tonight. And we continue onward through our agenda with a few more items.
Next up is the Syracuse Development Center, PDD, and Preliminary Plating Plan. It includes three different applications or projects. So we have a zoning map amendment, a district plan establishment, and a preliminary plating plan. And with that, I will, the applicant is Russell Albany's, and this is in the MX4 Zone District.
I am not Russell. I am Joe McNinch with SWBR. We are at 309 South Franklin Street here in Syracuse. I am the project architect on the project. I'm here with Shane O'Connor from TDK Engineering, Civil Engineer, and we are here representing our clients, the Albany's organization, so Russell, and also HHQ Home Headquarters, who is sharing one of the parcels on the, well, actually, majority of the parcels on the development. So I did write myself a little script here. I'm not an Eli Sands, I know many of you recall Eli, so I'm going to do my best to do my Eli Sands impersonation here tonight. So as was stated, we are here tonight before you to request positive recommendations of approval on three items noted on the agenda, zoning map amendment, district plan for plan development, district and preliminary plating plan. I guess I'll start by giving a high-level review of the project. So if you could flip to page 105 of the application packet, it gives the, like, the overall site plan. It's like all the way down at the bottom. We have been working with City of Syracuse staff and their departments as well as their consultants over the last approximate year to produce a master plan that we feel meets the needs of Syracuse, its vision for the redevelopment of the site, and ultimately meets the needs of the immediate community in which the project resides. Our plan, yeah, that plan right there, yep, thank you. Our plan consists of a few different phases, which is sort of broken up as you come up off of South Wilbur. You'll enter the site, there's a series of for-sale affordable townhomes. Those would be owner-occupied townhomes. There's 27 three-bedroom units. Those will be privately owned under an HOA agreement also. And then as you come up into the site, Albany's plans to develop Building A there, yep, where the cursor is, and then as you travel to the page south, there's also Building B. Both of those buildings will be four and five stories, you know, sort of depending on how you look at it with grade. Those are all affordable housing units, studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and three bedrooms. That is going to be funded under New York State Home and Community Renewals, HFA 4% bond deal. So that, the design of those buildings is fully underway. Construction documents are probably 75% complete. We will be looking to submit for building permits immediately following the resolution of the planning stuff that we're working on here with you all tonight. There is future phases planned towards the page north and west, Building C and Building D, as well as a few more townhouse parcels. The plans for those other sites are some market-rate housing options as well as a senior affordable housing building. To the page east, you can see in blue there the Future Tech Industrial Park. That is a site that the city is working on and working to find an anchor tenant in that area as part of, to bring this full master plan to fruition here. There's also, you know, the zoo is to the north, but there's also some, you know, area of land around the outside that will have some park-like settings, and I believe there's a future connection planned, a pedestrian connection to the north there. It's not really shown on this plan towards the zoo. So that's kind of the high level of the master plan, and I think it's probably best to segue into zoning, the zoning map, because it seems simpler, there's a lot less lines on the zoning map. That is like back in the very front of the application pages, like six, seven, and eight. It's currently zoned under MX4 zoning, which is, which is kind of urban core, and we are tonight seeking a planned development, and so that will afford some flexibility both on the development side and also have some assurance on the city side to really, you know, bring this vision to life. Although the spirit of this zoning, the MX4 zoning lends itself well to the development that we're proposing here, through many conversations with the city, it was determined that establishing and adopting a planned development district would ultimately provide future developments, the flexibility they will need to produce the projects that are aligned with the city's mission and goals and vision. The PDD would allow uses that are, that were presented in the master plan while limiting other uses that may have a adverse effect on the neighboring communities. And sort of as an aside, one of the, one of the reasons that we're excited about going with the PDD is it affords us the opportunity to identify minimum parcel sizes for those for-sale townhouses that wouldn't be strictly allowable under MX4, that would require variances. And then, so we touched highly on, or, yeah, on the zoning, and lastly, tonight, we're looking for, you know, a positive recommendation on our plating plan, which is, proposal identifies property lines that are in line with the proposed PDD that we just kind of discussed. This plan shows the property extents of both the Albany's organization's development to the west of the site and Home Headquarters development to the kind of northeast side as along South Wilbur. It's kind of the high-level recap of where we, where we are. Like, as I said, we've been working with city staff for quite a while to make sure that we're all in alignment and agreement on a lot of these things. We have been working with CNS engineers on the Loop Road and the profile and grading and, you know, SWIP and utilities and so on and so forth. So done a lot of legwork to date. Anything to add, Shane?
I guess mostly Shane O'Connor from TDK Engineering. I guess Joe did a pretty comprehensive review of the project. I guess if there was any questions regarding the, is the district plan next or is it kind of in discussion altogether? I'd like to just go through everything you want to present about all three, and then I'll kind of walk you through what we're going to do and we'll go from there. So in support or in conjunction to the zoning map amendment, the district plan, which I believe is in the appendices or it's in this package further in the document, you know, it just lists the uses, permitted uses, some dimensional standards. Mostly, it's a reduction of uses from the MX4 zoning district. Yeah, they're listed there. We're pretty much restricted to residential, the industrial uses that are applicable to the concept of the, you know, the technology light industrial building as part of the master plan, primarily the research and innovation industrial services. In addition, I believe daycare use was allowed, because there is thoughts that childcare would be perhaps a provided service in one of the units, one of the multifamily apartment buildings, parks and recreation. And then the main thing that the PDD will allow is that currently under MX4, single-unit attached dwellings are not a permitted use. So that allows some flexibility for the townhomes to be owner-occupied, single units while attached. And, and what it does do, Joe may have made mention of it, as far as protecting the vision for the property as a whole and working with the city, you know, there are some uses that are allowed in MX4 that, you know, someday down the road, you know, depending on changes of ownership of any of the buildings, you know, by, I guess, reducing the uses through the PDD, it sort of protects that vision. You know, there's some random uses in MX4, like vehicle showrooms and some other uses like that, liquor stores, radio stations, communication towers that would sort of negatively impact both the proposed residential environment and the existing residential neighborhood that borders Wilbur Ave., South Wilbur Ave. Really, I think that sums up the district plan. And then as far as the subdivision, preliminary subdivision plat, we've received comments from both the county and from a technical review from the city, pretty manageable comments of, you know, that would be updated as the final plat is prepared by the project So that, that appears to be in order. Basically, we're taking the two existing parcels and proposing, I believe, a total of 32 new parcels, 27 of which support the townhouses. Buildings A and B in the first phase will occupy a parcel, and then the balance of the property at this point would remain under city ownership with future purchasing as phases develop.
That can be 32 new parcels or 31?
I believe it was, I think the initial application said 31, and it was amended to say 32, to 32, let me double check.
Listing that we had of 27 new lots for single-unit attached dwellings and a listing of 26, so one probably got left off. So you might want to circle back and...
And it has been, we had conversations with the zoning administrator that caught it initially, and then our, when we addressed some of the comments from the city, when we resubmitted the application, we had updated it to 32. So the count, yeah.
Sure it syncs up with what you're actually trying to do.
Yeah, that has been updated and will be continued to, yeah.
Any other free areas that we would be...
No. Just one comment, I don't think it's on anything that we're acting on the evening, and I think it's, in some ways, it's premature, but in talking to people about this project, one of the comments I keep getting, and actually, the county made the same comment in today's material, is pedestrian connections to, you know, the zoo, Skunk City, other areas around. I just constantly getting that comment, so I'm just throwing that in as a reminder because, I mean, the renderings we have so far don't include those yet because they're not there. not there. And it's just a reference to that. Keeps coming up.
Sure, so one... Oh, the topography of the site, there is a ridge here, and I believe that... There's a walkway there. There are illustrated plans circulating. I don't believe it's part of the... Sort of an overlook. The western and... West and northwest boundary, there's actually fairly significant fencing here, obviously. Stand here on this water, east, northwest. There's fencing here, and then actually significant photography where it's a ravine in the north side area. It seems like, long story short, I guess, the best management... The whole loop road that's being developed by CNF and the city has sidewalks. Sidewalks down to South Wilbur, and then tie into where that...
Right. And just as a note, the, the city's design for the street does show a two-way bike path that sort of terminates at the southernmost point on the site plan as you round the bend and sort of head back towards the north. It does end there. Site's very steep, so, you know, it's, and it's not really through traffic, it's sort of around traffic, so we, we had all sort of agreed at that time that the bike path would come all the way up to the end of Building B. So it's, it's, there's definitely opportunities for pedestrian traffic. A lot of it will probably be dedicated to the folks that live there.
And you'll keep getting that comment until people can actually see.
Sure, of course, yep. Yep.
No, great introduction, thank you.
So, the good news is, we already performed seeker on this. So we deliberated on seeker, you deliberated on seeker on December the 2nd, so no new deliberation on seeker review is needed. However, you must deliberate on these three separate applications. The zoning map amendment and the planned development district need to be referred to the common council. The action and decision on the preliminary plating plan, that would be up to you to vote on. So, in that order, I'm suggesting that we go through deliberation and motion and/or recommendation for the zoning map amendment first, which is Z-2885, to change this from MX4 to a PDD.
Everything else follows. Is there a motion for action that we can put on the table for discussion?
Sure, I move...
Sorry, public comment.
E, thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this project, or the three components that we're considering this evening? In favor of any one of those three, or all three, please come forward to give your name, address, and your comments, and any one of these three components. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this project? Appears to be rushing forward to speak, so we'll close public comment and then return to our first order of the zoning map.
I move recommendation for Z-2885 for affirmative action by the common council with one condition. The condition is the owner will successfully file a district plan as required by PDD, zone district pursuant to rezone Article 5, Section 5.C6B.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion now before us for the recommendation on the plan. Further discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? So that recommendation moves forward. Council, now we can address the district plan establishment. Is there a motion for action on this, for a recommendation on this?
I move recommendation that Z-2884 be referred to the common council for affirmative action with three recommended, recommended conditions. One, any proposed amendment and approval of the district plan shall be subject to the same procedure as established in of the district plan itself. Two, the owner shall, the owner applicant shall submit project plan review application for any new construction in the planned district, zoning district. And three, the owner applicant shall engage the city prior to designing the light industrial technological building.
Staff would like to recommend that you consider adding a fourth condition, that we add telecommunications as a listed and permitted, allowed accessory use, just in case things like 5G or other items or antennas are developed there.
That is a friendly amendment?
Second.
Discussion now on this motion before us. There's no discussion. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries, leading us with just the one item for this overall project, the preliminary plating plan, R-2505, that was discussed.
And before you deliberate, just pursuant to general city law, just to stress, the first step to the subdivision review is this preliminary plat approval, so there will be a final detailed, final plat that will be back. So this is just first step in the process. I know as an older-built-out city, we haven't maybe done this in a while, but we are following that, and that's the purpose for the preliminary plan.
Time frame associated with the final maximum amount of time?
Nope. We're working on it.
Clarification? Is there a motion for action on the preliminary plan, planning plan, PDD?
I guess before a motion gets formed, it's my understanding there's no conditions recommended for this? Is that correct? There's nothing that comes to my mind.
Yeah, I think, you know, the, the purpose of that is that, you know, the final plan will be back, and that in the process of creating this and getting to this point, we have to, you know, go through the preliminary plan, so...
So we just need a straightforward motion for a recommendation to the common council for affirmative action?
This one is actually a decision by the...
Just by us, okay. So moved?
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? When was the last time the city did this?
You know, I don't, I don't know.
A trivia question.
Probably the, yeah. My neighborhood was built in the 60s.
Cool. And we have...
All right. We have one other business item. It's a three-mile limit, 3S-25-03 in Thomas Alina, 1019 Cold Springs Road. Owner Karen Patzer. Engineering, city engineering has reviewed and approved.
Is there a motion for action on this Alina female limit?
Move approval of 3S-25-03?
Second.
You have a discussion. There's no discussion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay. Abstentions? It's approved, deserve motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
In favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Returning, returning April 14?